Oh, yeah. If you want me to.
Well, I would love to have talked to you about it.
All right, would you rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you to everyone for joining us this evening. Jody, could you call the roll, please?
Dennis?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
Hallenbaugh?
Here.
Odericio?
Here.
Phipps?
Here.
Robinette?
Here.
Sherry?
Here.
All right, the minutes from our meeting on June 3rd were distributed for your perusal. Do we have any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Still moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay. Correspondents, Jody, do we have any correspondents this evening?
Not.
Okay. All righty, well, that brings us to a special recognition that the mayor has for this evening, so.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
How's that? Better. Thank you, Mr. President, I'm pleased to be here this evening. Share proclamation from the office of the mayor, celebrating a new event in Bowling Green. And I'm gonna ask the two young men responsible for this new event that we'll talk about to join me up front, Artie Gagnier and Tim Emrick, local entrepreneurs who I think most of us familiar with, they own Call of the Canyon and Easy Street Restaurant. So, thanks, guys, and I wanna just, I'm gonna go ahead and read the proclamation, it's short, but it's highlighting a new and really unique event that I think we'll all be proud of. So, again, this is a proclamation from the office of the mayor. Whereas the city of Bowling Green offers a wide array of diverse and unique restaurants to serve the Bowling Green community, and whereas restaurants are a backbone of the Bowling Green business community, creating jobs for hundreds of individuals, and whereas restaurants are consistently one of the most important factors for local tourism. Whereas the owners of Bowling Green restaurants have invested substantial resources into their businesses, while constantly or consistently supporting the local community in a myriad of ways. Now, therefore, I, Mike Osbacher, Mayor of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio, do hereby proclaim June 17th through the 21st, 2024, as the inaugural Restaurant Week in Bowling Green. So, I'm gonna present the proclamation to Artie and Tim and ask them to share some details of this upcoming event. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, council, for allowing this to happen here tonight. And so, as the mayor said, Restaurant Week is today through Friday, and we have 19 participating establishments, and each restaurant or establishment has designed a Restaurant Week menu. 10% of those sales from those menus will be donated to the Brown Bag Food Project, and we do have representatives here tonight from them. So, we're very excited to bring this to Bowling Green, we hope it'll be an annual event, and more importantly, we're excited for the community to get behind it and to donate to the Brown Bag Food Project.
Yeah, we just really appreciate the support from everybody, and it's just really great to see everybody come together, because we have such a great community that we live in. Thanks.
Is there, is there somewhere online where people can get more information?
Yes, there is. Restaurant Week BGOH is the Facebook page, and that has a list of participating restaurants, as well as what their specials are. And so, that's probably the best place to get the information. There's also been several media articles in the BG News and the Sentinel as well, so.
All right, thanks a lot.
Mr. President?
Mr. Harold?
I think I'm probably speaking for the rest of the council as well to say, thank you for this, thank you for the initiative, and thank you so very much for donating 10% to such a worthy charity. That's excellent.
Okay. That brings us to the lobby visitation portion of tonight's meeting. Jody, do we have people signed up for lobby visitation?
We do. Excuse me, Richard Beverson?
When you come up to the microphone, if you could give your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Richard Beverson. And I'm on 323 North Church Street, and I'm here to tell you what I have accumulated. I've had over 250 signatures for the ordinance of feeding wild animals in the backyard, and I wanted, would like to, from the June 3rd meeting, we had signed, and this is some of the suggestions that people have made to us, just drop the ordinance, the animal control, get an animal control person, and the deer crossing signs on Wooster Street, deer, and Winter Garden Woods, try to improve it, figure out a way to improve that. Then, on the other side, this is the other suggestions they made, that's the top four. But we've had all kinds of suggestions. Bigger issues than this, they did say that. And coexist with wild creatures, unnecessary law, free country, this is cruel and inhumane ordinance, education not laws. We need in harmony with all animals. Better solution than to eliminate feeds. Don't need useless ordinance again, and we've heard that 200, better than 250 times. And, and they all wanna feed everything and eliminate it. And this is coming, a lot of it, from the West End. And I, and I promised them, I'll go out and get more signatures if needed. I thank you for your time, but I would ask, like to ask, each and every one of the councilmen, who do you work for? Who do you work for? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bruce Kitter?
Bruce Kitter, 244 South Grove.
All right.
And this is in reference to the feeding wild animals, okay? It's one of the reasons you listed was landscaping damage, all right? City Council is not a homeowners association. Your job is not to solve somebody's poor landscaping decisions, all right? Deer been here for a long time, anybody's landscaping has not been here that long, all right? So, stop trying to do that. Don't use that as an excuse, all right? We also are part of the problem, we are, all right? And I say "we" because I live here, too, all right? We run a nature preserve, we plant trees all over the place for squirrels, all right? And we've allowed Simpson Garden grass to grow up higher for another habitat. So, we are animal friendly in a lot of senses, all right? I don't like the fact that we're going to make feeding wild animals an offense at all, okay? But if you do, think of this, especially the deer, and I use that as an example. I read in the paper, peanuts and corn are acceptable bird food. You're not gonna get rid of them, all right? Bird feeders come in a variety of shapes, I read in the paper that somebody was upset that they put them in a plate. Well, guess what? I've got a ceramic plate that sits in my backyard that I put bird food in, so that isn't going away, all right? Salt blocks aren't going away, and I'm gonna tell you why. Because Himalayan salt is used in all kinds of art and construction. So, instead of walking down to the TSC and buying a little white one, all they gotta do is go on Amazon, spend about $3 more, and get a piece of art, all right? Because they make lamps and yard statues and everything out of this stuff, okay? In fact, my daughters use it where they keep horses, all right? And it's Himalayan salt, all right? I don't know how you're gonna get around that. And the last thing I saw mentioned was people giving them water in baby pools. We don't wanna go there as a city and start giving people fines because they got a baby pool in their backyard or their front yard, all right? I guess those are my things that I wanna mention, okay? Because I don't think, no matter what you do with this ordinance, you're gonna solve what we need to solve, all right? Thank you. And I gotta go to a soccer game, otherwise I would stay.
Can I come with you?
Mary Hinkleman?
Mary Hinkleman, Executive Director of the Bowling Green Chamber of Commerce. Good evening, everyone. And Tim and Artie, thank you so very much for everything you're doing with Restaurant Week and your businesses, I really, we need so many of you people in our community, thank you. But that's not why I'm here. We have a big event coming up, BG Boom Festival and Fireworks on July 3rd. I'm hoping that everyone is planning to come out, 4 to 9, and then the fireworks after, the best fireworks in Northwest Ohio. And to build up to that, we do have to do some fundraising, and this Wednesday is our porkaline, which is typically held at the farmer's market. With the extreme temperatures, a press release was sent out tonight that we are moving the location so that we can keep those that are helping us do this a little more comfortable. We will be out at the Northwest Ohio Tractor Pullers Association, they're letting us use their building to keep people undercover, keep them cool while we're doing this, and it will be drive-through style. You ask, drive-through style, we did this with COVID, and it worked very, very well. You'll place your order and move up the line to the back of their building and collect your sandwiches. So, sorry, we're digging into Restaurant Week with that, didn't even know that it was gonna conflict, so sorry, guys. But we will be out there, starting at 4 o'clock, and it typically goes to 7, but we run it out usually about 6:30. So, come early, please, eat often, eat there, and then go get dessert or something, one of the restaurants, but thank you all.
All right, thank you very much.
Joseph Damar?
Hi, Joe Damar, 517 South Main Street, Bowling Green, Ohio. Believe it or not, I wasn't gonna talk about solar power today, but actually, the word went out on social media that because it's hot, we're all being asked to turn up our thermostats and tone down our electricity use because hot temperatures create spikes in prices, and so this is an opportune time to try to conserve electricity. Well, I wanted to inform the council that in places in the country and in the world, like California is an example, where there is a high penetration of rooftop solar specifically, during high heat like this, when you have bearing, sun bearing down, that's exactly when the solar panels put the most power on. And so, when you look at the demand in a place like California, and you come along here and you get to the sunniest, brightest, hottest part of the day, in places like that, that demand actually drops, it doesn't peak, it valleys. And this actually, in some places, goes to such an extreme that there's so much rooftop solar, when it's really hot and sunny out, that prices can go negative at the sunniest part of the day, and so you save a ton of money. Now, my poor, embattled, 6-kilowatt solar system, I wanna just sort of report to the, to the council that last month, I'm proud to say, our household generated, or put onto the grid, excuse me, 628 kilowatt hours, and we only took off the grid 380 kilowatt hours. So, we're not gonna conserve power because we're already putting more power on the grid than, than we're using. And if we did not have a policy that discouraged solar, if we did not have this solar rooftop penalty that makes it uneconomical to install solar panels, which has held the number of rooftop solar installations in BG to just 10, nobody would, we would not be getting this alert from the city, we would not be being asked to conserve, because the people with solar would be supplying below-market cost electricity, cheap electricity, to their neighbors without solar, and everyone would be better off. And I just wanted to, somebody posted on Facebook just this evening, fellow named Austin put this up on there on Bowling Green Raw, he said, BG, quote, "Turn up your thermostat to save energy and demand less from the power grid," unquote. Also BG, quote, "No, you can't have solar panels that harvest free energy from the sun," unquote. So, I think that kind of sums it up nicely, and tonight, you're gonna do the third reading on a study of Bowling Green's grid, and I was here the last meeting, and I suggested that this was the perfect opportunity to study these things and incorporate them into future grid planning, because things have changed immensely from the last time we did a grid study. Way back when they put the penalty in place, they paid $30,000 to a consulting firm, which was wrong. You know, the consulting firm, even BG admits they were wrong, because the consulting firm said, you need to charge this penalty, and you need to cut the reimbursement rate for the excess power to 5.5 cents. Well, since then, the city went ahead and increased it to 7.5 cents, which is nice, still 25% lower than the city pays wholesale for its other electricity that it buys from the coal plant, so still cheaper for the people of Bowling Green. But they were also wrong about the penalty, okay? So, this was, would be a chance to spend good money to erase the mistake of the bad $30,000 that you spent a few, you know, five years ago. And so, that's all I wanted to say about solar today, and the thing I actually wanted to talk to everyone about was that this coming Monday, the 24th, is actually the second anniversary of the Dobbs decision, which is the Supreme Court decision that overturned Roe versus Wade. And the, with, the Green Party, one of our key values is feminism, and so we oppose the Dobbs decision, and so we're gonna mark the anniversary next Monday, we're gonna have an event at the city, at the Veterans Building at City Park at 7:00 PM. Sarah Rainey Smith Beck, who is the Director of the Women's Studies Program at Bowling Green State University, is going to be talking about the impact that the Dobbs decision has had on women in the two years since it's been put into place. And so, I just wanted to invite anyone on the council, anyone in the community who wants to hear an expert talk on the actual effects of this decision, to join us next Monday at 7:00 PM, Veterans Building at the City Park. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Caitlin Elliott?
Caitlin Elliott, 219 Crim Street. I'm here to advocate for the passage of a wildlife feeding prohibition that only applies to wild animals, not lost pets or strays. The feeding of domestic animals, including cats, should be considered separately if the city chooses to address it at all. I have already sent a few emails to council members this past weekend, I won't repeat all of that, though I have printed a copy of it if you missed it. I did wanna add that squirrels are still wild animals, they are harmed and can spread disease and become aggressive through feeding, just like other species. The campus squirrels are pretty bold at this point already, but I understand it can be difficult to keep them out of bird feeders. I also wanted to share some other information. Today is the first day of Pollinator Week, June is National Pollinator Month. The things we do to help pollinators also provide food and habitat for all wildlife. For those who want to help area wildlife without harming them through direct feeding, there are many actions you can take. Reduce the size of your lawn and replace it with native plants, including trees, shrubs, vines, and perennials. Remove invasive species, do not use pesticides, turn off outside lights at night, leave the leaves in the fall. Even if you do not have a yard, many native plants can be grown in containers where they will still provide benefits. I could speak on this topic for quite a while, but instead, I suggest checking out the work of Doug Tallamy and Homegrown National Park, as well as Pollinator.org. We can coexist with nature. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
That's everyone.
Okay. That brings us to official reports. Mr. Mayor? We probably should introduce legislation. Oh, did I skip something? Introduction of new legislation, Jody?
That's not Jody.
Mr. President? No. Craig?
Good evening.
I'm sorry, I went to a soccer game about 10 minutes ago. The finance, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I've got four. First, an ordinance amending appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2024, and ending December 31st, 2024. An ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2024. An ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to enter into contracts or contracts for professional services for programming, site, due diligence, analysis, concept design, financial projections, and other related activities relating to improvements for the city's safety facilities. And an ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to sign a contract with the Bowling Green Municipal Employees Association, BGMEA, and declaring an emergency. All right. And the best thing about this is I have two pieces of legislation, and I skipped it anyway. I have two pieces of legislation from Utilities. I have an ordinance authorizing Utilities Director to execute a, to execute a construction agency agreement with the Wood County Port Authority, request qualifications, and enter into contract, contracts for engineering services for utility and right-of-way improvements for the expansion of the Woodbridge Business Park, and an ordinance authorizing the Utilities Director to transfer approximately 40.59 acres of city-owned property in the Woodbridge Business Park, parcel number B07-511-2100001000, to Bowling Green Economic Development in lieu of dues to facilitate a development project and declaring an emergency. Okay, now, official reports, Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mr. President, good evening, council. Just have one item that I wanted to draw attention to, the seat, many of you are aware of the fire that took place last in a residential setting, and it's an opportunity for all of us to, once again, share our appreciation for our first responders. Both our fire and policemen responded, as they always do in incidents such as those, and it's a reminder, I think, to all of us that we certainly cannot take those individuals and service they provide for granted. When the call came in, they were there and they responded. I was able to be on the site for a short period of time, and it was chaotic, and I was just, once again, exceptionally impressed with the skill and professionalism of our first responders, and I just wanted to draw attention to their efforts on that evening. Should also express our appreciation for those surrounding communities that provided aid, mutual aid in response to that fire, it was a significant fire. And finally, I think that this is another instance where we can be proud of the Bowling Green community, there were a number of people that were affected by that fire, they were displaced, and it was less than 12 hours, and there was already, I think, a very well-organized relief effort to provide support for those peoples that were impacted by that fire, so this is, again, just another example of the caring nature of the Bowling Green community. I was really proud of how our community recognized the need and organized itself to provide support for those people that were affected. So, to me, these are all reminders of the great place that Bowling Green is, and I'm exceptionally proud of our first responders and our community for their response in this very challenging situation. So, just wanted to share those thoughts, and subject any questions that you might have, that concludes my report. Are there any questions for the mayor this evening?
Mr. President?
Yep.
Firstly, I wanna say thank you, Mayor, for acknowledging the fire department, and this happened in my ward, and actually, I was keeping close eye of social media, seeing what was happening with aid and things like that, and I believe Harbor is still taking mutual aid donations, both monetary and, they have stuff on their website that are things that they need, and I believe it's harbor.com that you can go to, to find what those affected by the fire need, and those monetary donations, as well as, I believe, the Fringe Thift in Woodland Mall is also still taking donations, and I wanna thank Brown Bag Project for putting out a statement saying those affected by the fire can utilize them as well.
Thank you. Any other questions for the mayor this evening? I was, the fire was between me and my home, and so, for several hours, I could not get home, but I did see the fire chief there in his civilian clothes comforting the people that had the fire at the apartment, and our police officers were constantly, people coming up asking questions, when is the road gonna be open, and they all conducted themselves very professionally, courtesy, you know, with courtesy, and so, yeah, we're very lucky. We are, thank you. Okay, municipal administrator, Ms. Tredder?
Good evening. We are moving into event season, and a lot of great events are upcoming here in Bowling Green. Mary already talked about BG Boom, which will be held on July 3rd, and we are excited to be a partner and supporter of that event. But before that, this Friday is the first Firefly Night of the season. Just a reminder that Main Street will be closed on Friday evening in conjunction with that festival, and city staff will be supporting the closure and the event, and we applaud those organizers for their hard work. I do know, we met with them today to go over logistics, and they are well aware of the warm weather, and will be having provisions out there to have water and other ways for folks to cool themselves. Of course, it's the evening, so hopefully, it'll be cooling down by that time, but of course, people should be prepared for that heat. We are also in construction season, of course, and you have seen the orange barrels throughout the city. It's our time to remind you that we do keep updates on the city's website and in our weekly newsletter that goes out. And what we want to remind you of this evening, really, is to travel with intention, whether it's here or on highways, wherever you are, when you see workers, please keep in mind that they wanna go home to their families, too, and so although you may be in a hurry and may, it's impatient when you need to wait for something, that that extra minute or two could make a big difference, and that if we all just share a little patience with each other, that can really make a difference. So, we do appreciate that thought. And lastly, requesting that council move into executive session at some point this evening to discuss a collective bargaining agreement, and we would anticipate action after that executive session. That completes my report, subject to your questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Tredder this evening? Okay, thank you very much. City Attorney, Mr. Brown?
Good evening, no report.
Are there any questions for Mr. Brown? I know there will be later, but are there now? Okay. And Mr. O'Connell is not present. Okay, that brings us to council committee reports. Any council committee? Any council committee reports this evening? None? All right. Well, at this time then, I would like to move to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing union negotiations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Just, ma'am, I'm writing things down. Jody?
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odoricio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Okay. So we will adjourn to executive session, hopefully as briefly as possible. And when we return, there will be action taken later in the meeting. So, thank you. Okay. We have returned. And let's see, where did we leave off? Left off, we are at the reading of legislation.
Legislation for first reading. Ordinance number 9206 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to enter into contracts for professional services for programming, site due diligence, analysis, concept design, financial projections, and other related activities relating to improvements for the city's safety facilities.
Mr. Robinette?
I'm sorry, Greg. I was out of order.
I was gonna say, we can...
Yep.
Okay.
We'll circle back to that one. How about that?
I mean, we were there. Can we just move forward out of order, or do you want to...
Sure.
Maybe we should check the air for radon gas.
We're only reading that one once, anyway, so...
Yes.
You've done your job.
Okay. All right. Well, we're good with that one, then. All right. So, sorry about that. 92... Ordinance number 9204 for first reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for current... The current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2024.
Mr. President?
Mr. Robinette?
I move to suspend the rules and give ordinance 9204 its second and third readings.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Jody?
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odoricio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odoricio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Yes.
Ordinance 9204 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9205 for first reading. Ordinance amending appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2024.
Mr. President?
Mr. Robinette?
I believe the record should indicate that was the second and third readings of the ordinance, and I move to adopt ordinance 9204.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jody?
Odoricio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odoricio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odoricio?
Yes.
Okay. The rules are suspended for ordinance 9205.
Ordinance number 9205 for second and third readings. Ordinance amending appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2024.
Mr. President?
Mr. Robinette?
I move to adopt ordinance 9205.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Jody?
Robinette?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odoricio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance 9205 is adopted.
Ordinance number 9207 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to execute a construction agency agreement with the Wood County Port Authority, request qualifications, and enter into contracts for engineering services for utility and right-of-way improvements for the expansion of Woodbridge Business Park. Ordinance number 9208 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to transfer approximately 40.59 acres of city-owned property in the Woodbridge Business Park, parcel number B075112100001000, to Bowling Green Economic Development in lieu of dues to facilitate a development project and declaring an emergency.
I move to suspend the rules and give ordinance 9208 its second and third readings.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Jody?
Sherry?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odoricio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Okay. The rules are suspended for ordinance 9208.
Ordinance number 9208 for second and third readings. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to transfer approximately 40.59 acres of city-owned property in the Woodbridge Business Park, parcel number B075112100001000, to Bowling Green Economic Development in lieu of dues to facilitate a development project and declaring an emergency.
Okay. I make a motion to grant the emergency clause to ordinance 9208.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Jody?
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odoricio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Okay. So the emergency clause is adopted for ordinance 9208. I would like to move to adopt ordinance 9208. Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I would just like to pat myself on the back for getting through that process without messing... So, Jody?
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odoricio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance 9208 is adopted.
Ordinance number... Ordinance number 9209 for first reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to sign a contract with the Bowling Green Municipal Employees Association, BGMEA, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Mr. Robinette?
I move to suspend the rules and give ordinance 9209 its second and third readings.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Jody?
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odoricio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Yes.
The emergency clause is adopted for ordinance 9209. I now move to adopt ordinance 9209?
Second.
Okay. Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I would just like to say that this is the fourth of our five contracts that are being negotiated this year, and congratulations to all parties involved for a successful outcome. Jody?
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Yes.
The emergency clause is adopted for ordinance 9209. I now move to adopt ordinance 9209?
Second.
Okay. Properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I would just like to say that this is the fourth of our five contracts that are being
There is no legislation for second reading. Legislation for third reading. Resolution number three eight six four for third reading. Resolution adopting the estimate of revenues for the year 2025.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinett.
I move to adopt resolution three eight six four.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just think we should note for the record that Jody provided... Provided us with this estimate of revenues in advance of our meeting this evening.
Okay. Any other discussion? Jody?
Robinett?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Okay, resolution three eight six four is adopted.
Ordinance number nine one nine five for third reading. Ordinance for cleaning of streets by special assessment.
Mr. President.
Mr. Robinett.
I move to adopt ordinance nine one nine five.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Okay, Jody?
Sherry?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinett?
Yes.
Okay, so, ordinance nine one nine five is adopted.
Ordinance number nine one nine six for third reading. Ordinance amending and adopting section thirty eight point zero two A and creating section ninety point one eight of the codified ordinances of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, related to outdoor feeding prohibited.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dennis.
I circulated a proposed amendment to this legislation in advance of...
Do we have a motion to...
I'm sorry.
Adopt yet?
No. I move that we adopt ordinance nine one nine six.
Okay.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Okay.
Mr. President?
Yep.
I circulated a possible amendment to this legislation in advance of today's meeting. I believe that this legislation as drafted is overly broad and open. The definition of wild animal, for example. I think that we've seen that the feeding of deer and turkey has become a problem in the community.
Can I interrupt you just for a second?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, through no fault of your own, not everyone got that information prior to today. Is there anyone that has not had a chance to look at that? Or is everybody okay with continuing?
We can continue, but I did not see it until six p.m. tonight.
Okay. All right, just we have that standing rule, and so I wanted... If anyone had an objection, I wanted to give them an option to object, but please, go on.
I am gonna so severely pare this down that I can read it in about twenty seconds if you'd prefer to proceed that way.
Mr. President, may I suggest that we... Perhaps it might be worthwhile to let discussion continue a bit before we make an amendment?
Okay.
There'll be opportunity to amend, but we close the door on some other discussion and so doing.
Okay.
And since the motion to amend has not yet been made, I would just like to say on this, I have... My view is that I think this... The ordinance does need some revision or in the future. What I would prefer to see, frankly, is that we vote this down tonight, set it aside, look at this issue more closely over whatever time it takes, and focus on education. I don't doubt that some type of regulation may be necessary, but I don't think this is it, and I don't think this is the time for it. There's certainly no artificial deadline out there. So, I would prefer voting this down and spending more time focusing on education and perhaps working on some kind of consensus over what it exactly is we need to control via the ordinance, where there seems to be quite a bit of disagreement over what is or isn't or should be prohibited. And that's all I...
Is there any other discussion that is, shall we say, not directly related to making an amendment?
Mr. President.
Mr. Odericio.
I've received quite a few comments from my constituents. None of them have supported the legislation as written. I also would support voting it down. However, I recognize that the deer and the turkey have become a problem. If we restrict the ordinance to just the wildlife, that has been demonstrated to be a problem, I could support it. But right now, as it's written, I also do not support this legislation.
Okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Harold.
We have a number of options here. One is vote it down and start over. That's option A. Option B is just vote on it without any changes. Option C is to table it. Option D is to implement some of it so that there's something that starts and gives us an opportunity to build a track record to evaluate. And in... As part of that, continue to research it. In other words, do similar to the voting it down and continuing to research it, except implement, as Joel said, a couple components to it. And I think that, well, I'm comfortable with the idea that the legislation in its current form is not optimal. And I like the idea of implementing a small portion of it and continuing to research it, and not just legislation. Obviously, also to pursue... Continue pursuing the education aspect and look into other facets of this. For example, I think it is time for us to revisit how we would or the extent to which we would have an animal control employee. So, I guess what I'm saying is, implement part of it, continue to study it along with other aspects, and that gives us the advantage of... Pretty much the advantage of all of the options in that particular one.
Anyone else have any comments? Before I let Jeff finish? All right, Jeff, go ahead.
Okay. So, with that in mind, I believe there are several animals on this list, which is... As defined, an open-ended list that have been shown to be a problem, not only for public and private property, for workers in the city, and also for the wildlife themselves. Overpopulation is not good for anybody, and feeding animals drives that. So, with that in mind, I would move to amend the ordinance to read simply ninety point one eight, outdoor feeding prohibited. No person shall knowingly cause to be fed or provide food for deer or turkey on any private or public property within the boundaries of the city. Because I would strike all the definitions except for feed or feeding, I would then put that at the end of the paragraph to read, for the purposes of this section, feed or feeding is defined as the act of or the furnishing of food or other sustenance. So, that... The last part would be an amendment to what I proposed, but it doesn't make a lot of sense to have an A hanging out there without a B or a one without a two, so I think it needs reformatted.
I'm gonna have to...
Hunter can do that, or we can do it now.
I'm gonna have to bring it up on my phone, because I don't have it printed out.
I second it with the understanding that this is a first step of incremental approach to analyze this in more detail over time with the possibility of a multifaceted solution.
Several times over the last couple of years, going way back to when we first started taking suggestions for ARPA funding, this idea of deer as problematic has been brought to our attention by citizens. So, I agree with these changes that Jeff is proposing.
Mr. President.
Mr. Odericio.
This amendment would significantly limit the legislation. I believe it makes it more palatable. I could support this amendment.
Any other discussion prior to a vote?
Mr. President, just to...
Mr. Harold.
Just to add that, I think that the process that we've gone through, where we went and asked for and received quite a bit of public input, I think informed our decision, and I'm... I myself am very grateful for everyone that did speak on this.
Any other?
Mr. President?
Yes.
So, I attended the June third Transportation and Safety Committee meeting. I also heard from many community members on really both sides of this issue, and, you know, nearly all led with the primary concern for wildlife, which I thought was interesting. I think that Greg's point that education is so important here, and I think we really heard that from Amanda Gambi at the Transportation and Safety Committee meeting as well. And not just education with regard to how this ordinance would operate, right? But really, education and how to coexist with wildlife in our community. So, that is certainly the most important piece here. I don't think we can overstate that. But as regard... Or with regard to this specific ordinance, I think I can support Jeff's proposed amendments, support a more incremental approach here. So, I'll vote yes for those amendments.
Are there any other comments or questions, or...
Mr. President?
Yes, member Sherry?
It's hard to, you know, say everything... Anything that just hasn't been said already, but I attended that committee meeting. I've also had people email me from both sides as well, and there was a lot of information that was being missed through this whole process of this legislation of when squirrels were being taken out of the ordinance with Hunter's recommendations. I had emails on that, and a lot of the information there was missed that people thought they were still in there, and there was a lot of just... There was confusion with the definition of wildlife and what that meant, whether with the cat populations and things like that. But I think an incremental approach, as well as education, will help improve our city a lot, especially dealing with the deer and turkey wildlife. So, I can support this legislation with the adoption of the amendment.
Are there any other comments, or should we vote? Jody?
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinett?
No.
Sherry?
Yes.
Okay, so, ordinance nine one... Nine one nine six is amended. Do I have a motion to adopt?
It's a...
And seconded.
Was made by Jeff and Joel to adopt.
All right. So, call the rule for adoption.
As amended.
As amended.
By substitution.
By substitution.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinett?
No.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Okay, so, ordinance nine one nine six is adopted as amended by substitution.
Ordinance number nine one nine eight for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to enter into contracts for the downtown decorative pole painting project.
I move to adopt ordinance nine one nine eight.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Okay, Jody?
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinett?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
All right, ordinance nine one nine eight is adopted.
Ordinance number nine one nine nine for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the utilities director to enter into contracts for an electric distribution system study.
I move that we adopt ordinance nine one nine nine.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Jody?
Odericio?
Yes.
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinett?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes, ordinance nine one nine nine is adopted.
Ordinance number nine two zero zero for third reading. Ordinance authorizing the municipal director to seek qualifications, advertise for bids, and enter into contracts for design, engineering, property acquisition, construction, and other services related to the Pickleball Court Project at the Bowling Green Community Center.
Mr. President? I move that we adopt ordinance nine two zero zero.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Jody?
Phipps?
Yes.
Robinett?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Hallenbaugh?
Yes.
Odericio?
Yes.
All right, ordinance nine two zero zero is adopted. Is there any other business to come before council this evening? Hearing none? Oh, go ahead.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All right, properly moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Close same sign, we are adjourned.